Hello there, Madison.
Can you hear me now, Benu?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
You can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
That's great.
I just want to, I want to let you know, we are live to YouTube right now and we're gonna get started at 4:30.
Okay.
The meeting will start at 4:30.
Okay, got you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I got sidetracked. Well, I also wasn't sure HR would come. But you're good. She will follow up with me later to see who didn't. But you, you did it on the app? We've all tested it this time, Christian.
My light was on last time.
It was muted here, I think.
Yeah.
One minute to Shaw. Thirty seconds to Shaw. We are live on Shaw.
If we can have everybody's attention, please. Want to begin the meeting by thanking our broadcasting partners and our media partners for reporting on our meetings and broadcasting them. Like to acknowledge that we are in Robinson Huron Treaty territory, land the initial Abic have long referred to as Ba'uteng, traditional territory of Bajhwanah First Nation, Garden River First Nation, Sault Ste. Marie Historic Mayday Council, head office of Missin Abbey, Cree First Nation. And want to recognize the urban indigenous population, the good work that the Indigenous Friendship Center does here in Sault Ste. Marie. Madam Clerk, if we can begin our meeting, please.
Under Agenda Item 1, a motion by councilors Burney and Shoemaker resolve that the minutes of regular council meeting of October 12, 2021 be approved.
All in favor? Motion carried.
I should point out that Councilor Nero is participating virtually. I have a motion by councilors Nero and Hill Senior resolved that the agenda for October 25, 2021 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Approved.
And under Agenda Item 5.1 is the 2019 Medal of Merit presentation.
So this is indeed a special meeting. I want to recognize and thank retired Lieutenant Colonel Lance Knox for his patience. Lance was the 2020, sorry, 2019 recipient for the Medal of Merit. And because of COVID and an inability to have the ceremony that we traditionally have, Lance told us to take the time we needed to make sure that we can do things properly and agree with public health guidelines, and we've done that. So we are recognizing Lance tonight at this meeting, at the outset of the meeting. I think there's something nice to that because the Medal of Merit ceremony is usually a private ceremony. I think it's actually quite special that the community can see the recipient receive the Medal of Merit because it is the highest honor that our community does bestow upon anybody. So we will begin the recognition of Lance and I want to thank him and recognize him for attending tonight with his family and friends. I, you will note, have the chain of office on. I, as the mayor, only wore the chain of office when I was sworn in and when I bestowed this honor upon the recipients. Very pleased to recognize an outstanding citizen, Lieutenant Colonel Lance Knox, with the City of Sault Ste. Marie's Medal of Merit. Sault Ste. Marie is extremely proud of our citizens, who individually or as a member of a group continue to excel in various capacities, bringing great pride to our community in a way that should be recognized and celebrated. In 1969, the City of Sault Ste. Marie Council of the Day established the Medal of Merit Award to annually honor such excellence and achievement. A citation was approved which reads, "The mayor and members of city council have long recognized the need to pay tribute to those special individuals or groups who achieve top honors in athletic, cultural, academic fields, or who make outstanding contributions to our community." Presentation of the Medal of Merit Award includes the medal, pin, and citation, and represents Sault Ste. Marie's highest honor. The medal has the city's coat of arms embossed on its face. The color of the ribbon and the pin, gold, blue, and gray, are intended to reflect the image of Sault Ste. Marie as a flourishing, prosperous city. The blue represents the water or the seaway, and the gray band represents industry, in particular steel. The significance attached to this medal is indicative of an exceptional achievement or contribution. Each year Medal of Merit recipients are chosen by the Medal of Merit Committee comprised of the mayor and individuals representing, representing a cross-section of our community. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the members of the 2019 committee, Dion Elgie, Sheila Purvis, Jack Ostrowski, and his honor justice Romulio Walke. Medal of Merit Award recipients are selected from all walks of life. The list of past honorees include scientists, athletes, academics, and community builders, people who have contributed to the betterment of our community. Since the inception of the award, we have recognized over 150 citizens, including Dr. Roberta Bondar, Dr. David Wald, the Hollingsworth family, Team Jacobs, Mack and BJ Markku, Diane Marshall, Aljean Richter, Gail Broad, Tony Martin, Steve Butland, and Ron Irwin, just to name a few. Today Lance Knox officially joins this impressive group. At the age of 16, Lance joined the 49th Field Artillery Regiment as reservist. And his time with the military went on to span 42 years. During that period, he proudly wore the Canadian Armed Forces uniform and progressed through the ranks from gunner to ultimately holding the highest level of command as lieutenant colonel. Lance is the only soldier in the history of the 49th Field Regiment to rise from gunner to lieutenant colonel. Throughout his military career, Lance trained and mentored soldiers to serve in various capacities, be it humanitarian efforts, community service, or deployment into combat. Lance ensured every one of his shoulders, soldiers were well-prepared and supportive for the duties that they were called to. At the age of 51, married with a family and a full-time civilian job, he made the difficult but personally important decision to join his comrades in the field. He voluntarily deployed to serve in Afghanistan in 2010. Lance believed that if he was training soldiers preparing them to serve in battle, then he too had to be willing to make the same sacrifice. While in Afghanistan, he served as a captain and second-in-command of the Civil-Military Cooperation Team. In addition to providing support to combat forces, Civil-Military Cooperation Teams worked with local Afghans to assess the needs of villages and infrastructure and to connect them with required provisions. Thousands of miles from home, in a foreign country and culture, and leaving behind the safety and comfort that Canadians are accustomed to, Lance chose to serve in an effort to improve the lives of others. Lance has demonstrated an exemplary commitment to our community and our country through his longstanding involvement with the armed forces, both home and abroad. For more than four decades, he has dedicated himself to the 49th Field Artillery Regiment, encouraging many of its members to become active citizens who have made and continue to make a positive difference in our community. On behalf of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, it brings me great pride to present the 2019 Medal of Merit to Lance Knox. The most recipient, the most deserving recipient, congratulations Lance. Everybody can see to my left, we have a rendition of the medal, and I'm going to present the medal to Lance now. Lance, you're going to have to come to the front of the room in front of the DS here, and I can pin the medal on you. So I'm going to now call upon Lance to say a few words. The microphone is yours, sir.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship and councilors, good evening. Thank you for taking the time this evening to present me with this award. It truly is a humbling honor to be considered, let alone be a recipient. I'd like to thank my sponsors for taking their time to submit the nomination and the committee for their consideration of it. Majority of the nomination speaks to my military service. I was honored to be able to work with so many outstanding citizens of our community who took the oath and who wore the uniform. Sault Ste. Marie is blessed to have citizens who spent time in our amazing armory, whether it was in the primary reserve, the regular force, or the cadet programs. The training and experiences they acquired have allowed them to become excellent students, employees, and employers. In the waning years of my military life, I made a conscious effort to showcase the talents of our soldiers and to remind them of our community links. I think this award acknowledges that I had some success in that effort. In my civilian career, I had several opportunities to move out of the community, yet I never took a permanent position. My family has grown up here, and this is our home. Sault Ste. Marie has so much to offer and so much opportunity to grow. I am proud to call myself a Sault Lake. And in closing, I would like to humbly again thank my sponsor and all those who were involved in the award of this medal. Thank you.
So we are going to take a few pictures, but I was thinking, Lance, where we can do that, probably a good place to do that would be out front because we actually already have your name on the, the wall of recipients. So that would be, I will excuse myself from the council chambers and we can take some photos with your family and friends. So that concludes the formal portion of tonight's presentation. Like to thank everyone for coming. I'd also like to thank city staff who helped to arrange this ceremony. Thank you. So council, I'm going to excuse myself for a few minutes to spend a bit of time with Lance and his family and to return the chain of office to its proper place in my office. And I actually asked Councilor Shoemaker to sit in for me because although he isn't the, the acting mayor this month, he is very fluently bilingual and the next resident, the next matter in our agenda is the National Francophone Immigration Week proclamation. And I thought it would be nice this year to deliver that in French. So Councilor Shoemaker is going to take care of that and manage the agenda until I get back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Agenda item 5.2 is National Francophone Immigration Week. And under Agenda Item 7.4.1, the Fleet Services Review, we do have Benu Hurtig, Tony Yankovic, and Mark Canton from Mercury Associates on the virtual meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Yankovic, Ms. Hurtig, or Mr. Canton, or can you hear us?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes. Perfect. Well, I turn the floor over to you for your presentation.
All right. Thank you so much. So if we can go to slide one. Sorry, can you go one slide prior? The introductory slide. Thank you. Thank you. So this is Benu Hurtig here. I'm a senior consultant with Mercury Associates. And we also have from our team, Tony Yankovic, who is the managing director for the government vertical. And Mark Canton, he's the senior manager for the data analytics team in Mercury. So you can go to the next slide, please. So I, we wanted to start off by saying that the purpose of this study was to find areas of improvement in fleet management, the way it is being done today. In our opinion, it's a very proactive move, very proactive measure, and represents almost, well, represents a best practice in any management science, but particularly in fleet. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide key findings and recommendations to city council, as well as identify the highest priorities for improvement that we saw. You can go to the next slide, please. So we thought we would quickly set the table by talking about the industries, industry trends. And one thing, while you go to the next slide, one thing I'd like to highlight is that for any fleet management organization, it doesn't matter whether it's in the private sector or the government sector, the biggest challenge is to balance cost and budget with a level of service provided to the end users, or in this case, the residents of Sault Ste. Marie. So there are some things that are happening in industry which we think are game-changing. One of the things is the advances in information technology. And it really drives the demand for data, data-driven decision-making as versus institutional knowledge that people feel and know from experience. And it really pushes the, the envelope, if you will, on performance metrics. And the next thing that's happening in industry is evolving automotive technology. So consideration on for alternately fueled vehicles requires different employee skillsets. So instead of knowing how to fix a car or a vehicle that uses gasoline or diesel, we need to now know how to fix a vehicle that uses electric power, for example. So, and the workforce changes are also happening at a fairly rapid rate. I don't think it's a secret for anyone that there is a shortage of skilled trades. And in our world, it's in fleet, it's in fleet maintenance and repair. So what that starts to require is formal policies and procedures and standard key performance indicators and management reports. So that kind of normalizes the field for, for all concerned in fleet management. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the greening the fleet is also a very much topical thing that's happening. And it requires various strategies. So one of the strategies that's kind of obvious but needs to be said is renewing the fleet. Newer vehicles are more fuel-efficient generally. So just by renewing the fleet and keeping up with, you know, newer vehicles, you are actually becoming more green. Right sizing the fleet and downsizing the vehicles whenever it's possible. Reducing unnecessary vehicle engine idling is another area. And exploring alternative fuel and hybrid vehicles appropriate for the job and the environment. By environment, I mean the geography of where the work is being done. So CNG has been used in various municipalities. The, the key thing to remember is that there are prerequisites. Before deploying a CNG vehicle, there are some prerequisites that must be taken care of. So availability of CNG fueling stations is one. CNG-trained certified mechanics is another. And the last, but not the least, is a maintenance and repair facilities must be upgraded to meet the CNG-related requirements and regulations. And we've provided one reference at the bottom, so we can go to the next slide, please. So with that backdrop, we, we want to just quickly give you a description or the scope of the project. So the study was limited to the public works fleet operation. And there are, there were two key components. One was the business practices review. One was the business practices review of key elements of fleet services, operations and programs. We'll provide the details in a minute. And and this included cost benchmarking as well. So the, and the second part of the study was to right size the fleet, basically to look at the utilization of the fleet. Look at the criticality of the fleet and based on that through very extensive and collaborative discussions with the city of Sault Ste. Marie, especially folks in public works. We have provided some recommendations on right sizing the fleet. Can go to the next slide, please. So for the practices review, all the key components of fleet management were were looked at. And I want to repeat that this is a very proactive move by fleet management personnel at the city. Not every fleet wants to be told, hey, there are areas of improvement that you need to focus on. So this was a very proactive move, a measure that was taken by P W E S. And the scope is asset allocation and utilization management. The acquisition and disposal, how that's being done. In-house maintenance and repair, parts management, fuel management. We also looked at the structure of, you know, is the staffing fine with respect to the garage? Are there enough mechanics and technicians to do the job? So that's the resources part as well as looking at the facility. Fleet management information systems, fleet cost and financial management. And finally, the fleet user services and how they're being rendered. So we talked to all the key clients of fleet management for the last item. Okay, go ahead, please, on the next slide. The approach we took, you know, if I could describe it in one or two words, would be collaborative and iterative. So what that means is we collaborated with the fleet team, with all the teams that support fleet, fleet partners like finance, IT procurement. And and we talked to the end users, which were the key clients. So essentially, we requested a whole bunch of documents and the fleet inventory data, including costs for the last three years or so. And we interviewed fleet personnel, fleet client groups, and as well as, like I said, the fleet partners. We validated our conclusions or interim conclusions and findings with the same people that I mentioned beforehand. And we prepared project reports. For the right sizing, we conducted an online survey of all vehicles that were in school and we conducted with fleet, we worked with fleet clients to finalize the vehicle list that for either reassignment or removal from the fleet. And then we calculated the cost savings based on what was recommended for removal or reassignment. And of course, we included all the findings and report and recommendations in the project reports. So go ahead, please, to the next slide. So our deliverables. Our deliverables were a, an Excel workbook which measured and benchmarked conditions and performance levels. The second deliverable was also an Excel workbook which had the costs and the appropriateness of such costs. Then we also, we provided a PowerPoint report and a word report as well as the final one, which was an Excel workbook and a PowerPoint on the right sizing exercise. So those were the deliverables. Go ahead, please. So here I'm just, we're just going to very quickly, there's a lot of data here, but we just wanted to give you some highlights of what we found from the fleet inventory. So there are 298 active units and we, our methodology not requires, but our methodology is to convert the asset quantity to by looking at their vehicle description, class code. We convert that to something called vehicle equivalent unit, which kind of normalizes the fleet. And it's really the V E U's that drive how much effort is required to maintain and repair them. So you can see in the charts on the tables on the side that the count and the V U's. So it's important to note that you'll see that construction doesn't have, it only has 50 vehicle or asset count. But if you look at the V U, it's 222. So, you know, if we order them in terms of what effort is required by the mechanics, you will see that construction, sorry, the trucks, heavy duty trucks are the most intense and then comes the construction equipment. So there's various slices and dices of this data presented by different views in the Excel workbook. But for now, this is, this is the salient things or data points we wanted to to show. Go ahead, please. So, so what is the full time equivalent and cost look like for, for fleet? So we basically counted partial or full time people working on fleet. And so the total F T E is 22, almost 23. And the cost is summarized. So fleet is running about a $9 million operation. And that includes maintenance and repair, fuel, salaries and management. So many of the costs, of course, are passed through, which end up really in the fleet users budgets. But overall, fleet is running about a $9 million operation. Please go ahead to the next slide. So the fleet client profile is shown here by both V E U, vehicle equivalent unit and by vehicle count. So operation has the, not surprisingly, has the highest count and the highest V U at 571. But you'll note that parks has 74, which is the next quantity. But they're, they're below, if you will, in the use when compared to landfill. So that means that operations is putting the highest demand on the maintenance and repair resources and then comes landfill and then comes parks. Go ahead, please, to the next. So this is a really important slide. We calculated fleet age by department. So, you know, yes, there are a lot, there are various colors here and a lot of data points. The key thing to remember is that in the, when we calculated the average of the fleet, it's about 10 years. The average age. So assuming normal distribution, that means the fleet on the average is 19 to 20 years old, which is about twice the target or you know, expected life of these assets. So we can very easily conclude from this chart that the, the fleet is aging and is quite aged. So there's definitely a requirement to renew the fleet. There is, there is a relationship between an old fleet and the maintenance and repair costs going up. And we see it in our own personal vehicles and we certainly see it in the fleet vehicles. So just to repeat, your, the, the age is of your fleet is about 19 to 20 years. Sorry, not the age, the replacement cycle is about 19 to 20 years. And the average age is about 10 years, which is, which is old, which is quite high. Okay. So next slide, please. So we then went ahead and benchmarked the costs. So in for other municipal studies, we see cost per V U range of about $2,400 to $3,800. And the variation is due to, you know, geographies and various other environmental factors and of course, the age of the fleet. In the city's case, the cost per V U is about $5,456. And the probable reasons, as we've stated, are age of the, the aging fleet. And there is among the mechanics, there is some absentism that I know the team is addressing. So please go ahead and change the slide. So while this was not, a full replacement study was not in the scope of this, this engagement. We did do a very rudimentary one and, and it shows that there is a backlog. A replacement backlog of depending on how you slice the number, it could be 10 and a half million to 12.3 million. So and the annual requirement, this is very broad brush and rudimentary. But the cost of it, the replacement cost or budget required is about 2.9 million annually. And and current level from 2017 to 2021 has been about 2.1 million. So, yeah, so that's, that's a very rudimentary analysis. Go ahead, please, to the next slide. So now the findings. So our methodology includes a maturity rating. So we look at the practices, how they're being done, how they're being adhered to, what are the checks and balances? And we assign a maturity rating for the, for the practices. So and and actually each of the subfunctions as well of, of the management area, there are many subsections. So we also do that for each subsection. So go ahead, please, to the next slide. So here, what we've tried to identify is by color coding, it is in red are the ones that rank the lowest, in yellow are in the middle and the green are are, you know, on the higher side. So I just wanted to highlight that, you know, there are six areas where the team, in spite of an aging fleet, is doing their best. And in six of the areas that we looked at, they're meeting or exceeding expectations, which is quite remarkable, given, like I said, the age of the fleet. There are some areas, obviously, that need improvement. And, and if you look at, if you start breaking it down into subfunctions, it can be quite overwhelming. But I just wanted to highlight that this is how it kind of netted out. The, the report that we have provided, the more detailed report, you can see the rating for each sub function in each area. But in our opinion, you know, the team is doing quite a good job with, with what they have. So we'll go to the next slide. And this is really about the fleet right sizing. So I've already covered the overall methodology. So we collect data, we identify low utilization vehicles. We survey the fleet users, we earmark assets, we present findings and then we basically, once we've gone back and forth a few times, then we prepare the reports and quantify the savings. So go ahead and to the next slide, please. So here we had here, we're showing what was in the scope. So if you see the term VAM, it just means vehicle allocation methodology that are, that's our jargon. It's explained quite well in the report, but it's just a synonym for this right sizing exercise that we did. So these are the vehicles that were in scope by both class type and by division in the, in the lower table. So operations at 137 vehicles, traffic had nine and so on. Go ahead, please, to the next slide. So this is the result again through really an extensive and collaborative exercise with the fleet, fleet clients being included every step of the way. And we're seeing a total of 14 assets, which is really only like 4.6% of the, of the total fleet. And we've also identified four summer rental assets that, you know, if the city were able to get a long term rental contract for the summer, then these four vehicles could be eliminated. So please go ahead to the next slide. So this is the cost savings that one could have. It's roughly adds up to about $2.2 million. One thing I really want to highlight that it because of the aging fleet, the fleet clients cannot rely on their vehicles for the job. Hence, these vehicles are, the, the extra vehicles, the 14 that we mentioned, it's kind of like keeping a spare set of vehicles in case one breaks down. So these, so what we're, it's a strong caveat, folks, but what we're saying is that the renewal program is a critical dependency before you can eliminate any vehicles from the fleet. So we can go to the next slide, please. So this is the cost savings for the summer assets. And again, the dependency is that a long term rental can be, can be put in place. So this is definitely an area to explore. However, if there are no vendors for giving a long term rental contract, then this cannot be enacted. Okay, please go to the next slide. So key recommendations. And so as I said earlier, there was a lot of data, a lot of information and we needed to distill it into high priority items for the city. Anything you see in orange color font, a color text is, are considered high priority. So a practical replacement plan and capital funding increase to renew the fleet. That's of everything that is our top. We suggest, we recommend that that's the top priority for the city of Sault Ste. Marie fleet management. Then we, then normally we would say, okay, we need to do a purpose built fleet management information system and use that as the system of record for anything to do with fleet. And that's identified if you go clockwise in the, in the third quarter or second pie shape. But there is a dependency on that. And and that is that you need to, or any fleet organization needs to look at their procedures and their workflows. And and they need to streamline it before preparing, if you will, the business requirements that must go into acquiring and acquiring a fleet management information system. So as such, streamlining of procedures particularly pertaining to the garage operations becomes your second priority. And once that's done, then, or or close to done, then the work can begin on acquiring a fleet management information system. So please go ahead to the next slide. So now we are providing the details. So the, the chart you saw just, just beforehand is kind of a summary. So here we provide the key improvement initiatives. We provide what the recommendation is, benefits and estimated effort or cost. So, so for example, let's look at the fleet renewal. There we, a practical and smooth replacement plan needs to be developed. Additional capital funding needs to be obtained and and, you know, the, the city will need to ensure that there are enough resources, sufficient resources for the acquisition. for the acquisition and disposal uh process. So so that's um, those are the recommendations. And the benefits are that you're going to reduce the maintenance and repair cost, improve vehicle equipment reliability and availability, which is really, really important for keeping the service levels that you want to keep for the residents. And potentially improve operator productivity. So the estimated cost there is, you know, internally, the work can be done by internal internal folks, particularly the folks, the finance uh personnel who support uh fleet management. Um, and uh, you know, if required uh advisory services can be provided, uh one can outsource the whole thing and, you know, that's an a- an option as well. And of course, the annual average capital estimate, this is only an estimate uh based on the basic or rudimentary uh replacement plan that we did is two point nine million. So um I don't uh intend to go through all the improvement initiatives, except to highlight. Uh just give you some highlights. The first one, I think, is important, uh really important, highest priority, and that's why we went through the details. The second is garage services. Um and there are um there are various recommendations uh that we made, and some, in fact, may be work in progress. So we did recommend a part specialist um for uh for the garages. Far too much time is being spent by, you know, uh the mechanics to try and source the right part. And again, uh it, that task becomes more and more difficult as the vehicles become older and older. So there is a plan, there is a facility improvement suggestion that we've also made. Um, a process streamlining and developing um maybe some like you have, you do outsource and you do sublet today, but our recommendation is to develop the strategy and figure out um which item should be outsourced and why. So so that's the um garage services. Please go to the next slide. Um, so continuing along on the garage services, uh increasing stocking of parts for long lead parts. Um and that we know due to COVID and other factors in the industry, that's become quite a challenge um in in fleet management, acquiring um parts and um especially for older vehicles. So um and and there's a need to clean up the obsolete inventory as well. For core enablers, um again, hugely, it uh very, very important is the um is the acquisition and implementation of a purpose-built and dedicated fleet management information system. The current one, I know, I I've been told and um that, you know, it was uh, it was not the full solution that the team wanted, but there were funding constraints and so on. So it it a basically a ticket uh management system was adopted for as a work order management system. So we need to develop the streamlined workflows um and implement parts management as well in in the new FMIS. So that's the core enablers part. Um, the rate development and charge back, that one we also recommend. Um, uh and and this one, you know, is enabled, if you will, by a pro- purpose-built FMIS. So we didn't rank it high as a high in priority because it really does require the a good purpose-built fleet management information system to implement. Okay, so we're concluding, so you can go to the next slide, please. And so ju- these are some of the important considerations for implementation. Sometimes when we talk about improvements, um we can think that, oh, they're easy or they can happen overnight. Um, and it doesn't. So, you know, organizational focus is required. Project management discipline is required, knowledgeable resources and financial investment are required. Um, some initiatives can be completed within a year, and the benefits are realizable like immediately thereafter, but others will take, um, you know, will span one, two, two and a half years. Um, and 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 it's because they're complex, it's because they have dependency on enablers. And it's because some some of them will require some, you know, cultural changes. So uh generally, the program, if you will, for improvement is a multi-year endeavor and requiring a champion, a plan, resources, appropriate budget and and organizational commitment. So on that note, we wanted to conclude the presentation and thank thank the city of Saint Marie for giving us this opportunity. Uh, if you want to learn more about Mercury Associates, we have put it in an appendix. Um, and I don't think we need, yeah, you can just flash through those slides, but we don't need to go through that. So um, yeah, we wanted to thank the the folks, especially in fleet management, who gave up their valuable time towards this study. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It was very informative. I think you can all agree the report had a lot of really good information in it. I've got a list of counselors who've already uh indicated that they have questions. So Mr. CEO, if if staff has nothing at at this point, I'll go to council for questions. Counselor, we'll start with Counselor Christian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with you. I think it's a very uh thorough report, very robust with a lot of data points that we need to digest and appreciate. I also think the report is very, very important in light of the fact that this department probably more so than any other department in the city touches everybody in the community. So it plays an important role, and I think it's something that we needed to work at. My sense is, when you look at the report, um it looks like despite the fact that there are um resource limitations, our inability to fund it even more. I think staff is doing a pretty good job. I also think there's a couple of areas that are a bit bleak. Um, but it is a starting point, and I think that that's very, very important, and I'm glad you're taking that step. So if I do, if I can, I'd like to start uh by asking our presenter. When we look at, um, I'm on page five of the report, the executive summary, when it talks about total FTEs at twenty-two point six, can you comment on how that compares um to other organizations of this size and this type of operation? Can you, can you elaborate on that? Is that reasonable? Is it in line? And if you've already answered this, I apologize. There is a lot of information um to get through. So that's my question, my first question.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um I I would like to comment on that, whether the FTP is appropriate at an appropriate level or not when compared with other municipalities. And and we believe that it is, you know, there's no hard and fast on resourcing uh because every fleet seems to have its unique um challenges, if you will. But it's within the range of what we expected.
Okay, thank you. Um, in the report, when you're talking about benchmarking our our costs of repair, et cetera, maintenance, and we come in at fifty-four, fifty-six, what do you mean by um cost of repairs for non-capital assets? Wha- what does that mean specifically?
But so for that one, if I may, I will uh turn that question over to Mark uh Canton of our team, Mark. Um, so what we mean by non-capital repair generally is vehicles that have been, if you will, put into service. Okay, and because sometimes a new vehicle will require some maintenance and repair as well because it's deficient when it arrived or for different reasons. So that's what we call maintenance and repair for capital assets. Um, so go ahead and mo- Mark and add anything that you wish to add to that answer.
Sure. So uh through you, Mr. Mayor, I I will respond. I fundamentally, what we what we found when analyzing the data was that there was um, there was apparently quite a bit of uh I meant maintenance and repair work for assets that don't uh normally or necessarily um meet the definition as being appropriate for a fleet inventory. So for example, you might have certain grounds equipment uh that uh generally speaking, because of their low cost of acquisition, um, you know, may not be treated as a capital asset. And yet certainly during the course of operation, uh repairs to an asset of that nature may be necessary. The repair gets done, the cost gets recorded appropriately. Uh however, there is no uh asset, so to speak, in an inventory from which to to track that uh to to track that cost back to uh because it wasn't a capital asset to begin with. So uh the the most common example of that taking place would be, you know, so small engine equipment, grounds equipment, uh things of that nature. If you can imagine, uh let's say a weed whacker or a lawnmower uh is the first thing that comes to my mind. And so, and so that was present, that cost was present in the data without necessarily being able to be immediately tied to uh an an asset in the inventory.
Thank you very much. Good explanation. I appreciate that. Um, perhaps this is a question I can direct at staff and you know, reading this, I I came across this issue of absenteeism. My training has always taught me that absenteeism is a red flag. So I I guess I'd like to know what's driving absenteeism. They could speak to that briefly and um if you can, uh address what's being done with it. And I understand that it could be confidential. I appreciate it if you can't, but I'd at least like to know what will be driving absenteeism.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to counselor, to counsel, actually, um what's actually driving is an aging workforce. A lot of our mechanics are uh are are quite senior now, and it's very difficult to get younger mechanics. So to be quite honest with you, that's the driving force. We just have to have a a senior workforce. And and it's uh, you're working on uh heavy equipment, day in, day out, it takes its toll. So uh short answer is, we have an aging workforce with aging equipment.
A follow-up, if I may, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Mr. Gerty. Um, how much of that is lack of personnel or available talent? And how much of it has to do with the uh wage comparators for other organizations that would be seeking the service?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to couns- to counsel and to Counselor Christian, the there is a wage difference, there's no question about it, but we work under collective agreements, we have to follow through. Uh, the other thing is, is uh it's very difficult. Uh, the training programs today aren't bringing on mechanics as quick as they should, and there's not the interest there anymore for um people to go into the mechanical field, unfortunately. So that's where our shortcomings come in. As a matter of fact, I believe uh we're probably short two now at this point. Uh, so we're, uh I guess when you look at our uh the amount of uh FTEs uh that we should have, we're probably there. Unfortunately, we just can't seem to find more.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have three more questions. Try to make them brief as possible. Uh, to our presenters, on page five, there was a paragraph, or there is a paragraph that I'm reading, and I think I understand it, but I'd like you to articulate it, and it begins just above the expense summary. It says, it is to be noted that not all fleet costs are included in the fleet budget. FMP's goal is to have a zero-based budget in which all three costs are offset through credits pursued by their client's budget, and it goes on for a couple more sentences. Can you, in layman's terms, explain what that means?
Yes, yes, we can. Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um what we're referring to is fleet has, uh for the lack of a better word, a placeholder style of budget. So they're given X amount for the operating cap- costs. The expectation for any fleet organization is to have a zero bed budget. So whatever they charge back or pass through in terms of cost allocation, it should all and the, so it should all net out to zero. So what is being passed through, what is being uh spent by fleet, it should net out to zero. But often, it does not. At the end of the year, um fleet has a negative uh basically, they have a deficit to deal with. And then that gets apportioned to various client, uh the fleet clients at the end of the year. So I call that chewing up, and that's, that's what we uh we've seen.
So when we're referring to clients, we're talking about other departments within the organization that you
Correct.
And and so those costs should be allocated to those departments. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That is through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. The costs uh that fleet encourages are all really on behalf of the fleet clients, and they should be allocated to the to the fleet client groups, so parks, landfill, uh operations and so on. Um, and there are various methodologies to be able to do that. And it just depends on which uh methodology can be, first of all, uh implemented within the organization, whether the um de- details are available or not, the uh in a, in a one consolidated system. Um, and uh so anyway, there are ma- many uh ways, different organizations are doing what we call charge back.
Right.
So
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Final question, I had a few more, but I'll pass this on and defer to my colleagues here. But one final question. Uh, in the report, it's asking for council to consider for budget deliberation, the cost for bringing your company on to implement some of these changes. How common or what is your practice post-implementation? What service do you provide in terms of uh highlighting or showing us where the savings are, which savings have been realized? I don't have a problem with investing in processes and uh the things we need, but I don't think it ends there. We need to know that we're getting uh an ROI in our investment. What 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 do you provide normally after the fact?
So uh through you, Mr. Mayor, may I ask, after the fact is after implementation?
Yes.
Okay, so um the the few things that we've identified at for areas of improvement, those uh will those are kind of, if you will, facilitating the next steps. So for example, the garage operations, streamlining the procedures, that will um uh, you know, facilitate the FMIS implementation. And you know, I'll I'll ask Tony to add to that. Uh, but essentially, it, we can recalculate, if you will, af- but it's not overnight. I think I need to emphasize that. That is not overnight, that you're going to start seeing the benefits. But uh, you know, assuming we can implement all the um areas that we've identified, uh if you were to do another cost per V U analysis down the line, you will see that it's it's gone down. The cost has gone down. So Tony, please add to the types of services that Mercury can provide post-implementation.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor, um Mercury is commonly called upon by clients to uh uh continue working with them to implement some of the uh improvement initiatives that have been identified for that specific client. Uh, these uh take all forms from developing very detailed uh fleet replacement uh plans to developing charge-back rates, to developing policies and procedures. So that is very common uh in our area. Um, you know, and and really, there's, it it's difficult to uh pencil the cost of reduction in in overall fleet management and maintenance cost. However, um we typically see a reduction in cost um associated with renewing the fleet and reducing the average age of the fleet. Uh, we did a study for a client uh recently that showed uh somewhere between an eight and twelve percent reduction in overall maintenance repair cost by reducing the average age of the fleet by two years. Um, there's also other things that that really need to be um identified, and it's really service level improvements which are very difficult to quantify when it comes to cost savings. But the 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 ability to make your technicians and make your fleet operation more efficient and effective uh is definitely something that most clients see.
Thank you. I I'm I'm gonna end there, just uh just to pick up on the question that I asked, I guess. And I appreciate the response. I guess what I'm getting at is regardless of what we're able to implement. I guess what I'm getting at is regardless of what we're able to implement, uh how far down the road we can go with this. I'm concerned at some point that council will be provided, whether it's this council or the next council, with data on how well we uh we effectively made changes. So in other words, if we've spent the money, we've recognized this amount of dollars in savings. I have no doubt we're going to save money and we'll streamline things. But I think it's important for the public and council to know exactly what savings were realized. We we need hard data, we need metrics. Thank you very much.
All right, uh now I have Counselor Shoemaker next on the list. Counselor Shoemaker? Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Through you, um first to uh our our folks from Mercury who are on the line. Um did the did the review of did the review of our fleet um use? I guess, does it use kind of a benchmarking of what's appropriate in other uh similar-sized municipalities or organizations? Or do you consider the appropriateness of the size of the fleet based on our specific local circumstances? Or a bit of both?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um the the way we've um done the benchmarking, it was with a range of cost per VEU that we've observed for municipalities. Um and and that range exists um uh because of age of the fleet. Um it exists because of different geographies. It 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 exists because uh the weather conditions are tough. So so that's the range we have seen, uh which I pointed out was something like twenty-four hundred dollars to about thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars. That was the range. And so when we were looking at the fleet um operated by Suzanne, city of Suzanne-Marie, um we were considering those geographies and the harsh winter conditions and so on. So we were uh we were com- so so that's why we provided the higher part of that range. That's what we were we would have expected to see because of the harsh uh weather conditions. But the rest is coming from the aging fleet.
Right. No, okay, I appreciate that. That uh clarifies it. Um then through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, either to Mr. Girardi, Michelle. There's a request uh in the staff report for uh that it be referred to budget for funds to implement some uh some of the follow-up uh processes through Mercury. And I'm wondering if um the savings that are recommended to be found can fund the 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 amounts that are being requested to pay for Mercury's services. So could it be, you know, instead of instead of asking for these funds to be paid through the budget, can it be that funds can be saved through the recommendations and paid for that way?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. I think what needs to be brought to council's attention is that the budget has been deficient for the operating costs as well as for the capital replacement. So the savings that they're talking about in this report are actually cost avoidance. So there's not really going to be a budgetary impact. If we don't put these things in place, we would have to increase the budget.
Okay, my clarifies it. Thank you. With respect to the uh request that came a number of years ago, or it's coming for a number of years in a row, I should say, for an increase to the Public Works uh reserve amount, uh I think the total that was being requested, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh and and what's been approved so far has been two hundred and fifty thousand. Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, either to Mr. Girardi or to the consultants. Um that would bring us from the, I think, two point one that we're currently spending. If we add another five hundred, that will be at two point six. I mean, it's not it's not our ideal amount, which I think the folks from Mercury have said is two point nine, but is is two point nine, I guess, I guess the question is, is two point nine a number that we have to hit in order uh to to achieve our targets, or is it something we need to strive towards?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll start the answering process and then we'll ask one of my colleagues to add. Um uh I'll ask Mark to add to it. So two point nine million that we calculated is based on a very rudimentary replacement plan. It's a proprietary tool that we use to just get some directional guidance on how, what is the situation with the replacement backlog. When a practical uh realistic uh replacement plan is generated, it will show um you know, uh it it may show something different because remember that it's an average amount, average annual amount. So when we develop a practical replacement plan, um it it would be different amounts for multi-years averaging two point nine million. So um so at that point, I'll I'll just ask Mark to add to what I just said. Please, Mark.
Sure. So through you, Mr. Mayor, one point I would like to clarify is it two point one million is the historical spend that we calculated. So I believe that actually if two hundred and fifty thousand has already been approved, uh an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand would actually get you even uh uh closer to that two point nine. In fact, I think it would uh it would get you there. Um in any in either event, the 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 more money that the the amount of replacement spending that you increase by will you know, help you to address your backlog. To try to answer your question directly, uh fundamentally, two point nine million is the amount of money that is needed to be spent in twenty-two dollars, meaning it would need to be inflated moving forward in order to address your backlog over time. Uh it would not be addressed immediately. And to maintain that you uh are stay on time, so to speak, with appropriate replacements based on uh the life cycles that are in place currently uh at, you know, within your fleet. So in short, yes, you you do need to hit this two point nine million dollar. This is for the entire fleet as a whole, as we talked about earlier with lots to landfill and operations and so forth. Uh anything short of that will certainly help. However, you will continue to grow a a a backlog fundamentally uh by not being able to replace assets that are deferred short term uh in a in a near enough term to avoid that problem. That said, if I may, um if I may suggest, based on my experience, I have seen uh debt financing utilized um uh quite uh you know, quite well, quite frankly, uh to both address the backlog, that is to increase replacement spend without increasing uh budgetary requin- requirements. And in fact, in most cases, cr- generating dramatic savings and budgetary requirements. So there are alternatives and resources. And uh what what we would suggest in the full detail of our recommendations would be in developing this plan would be to model various financing or alternatives, right? Uh debt financing ve- via various terms, uh whether it's a you know, traditional bank loan or some other bonding, et cetera, leasing and then developing a reserve fund and so forth and so on. So we can model those costs. Obviously, you can attempt to do that internally as well. And we su- would suggest that before implementing a strategic plan, uh having modeled those costs in advance so that the city could have a very strong understanding of what the true financial impact would be uh on the various and the various budgeting plans.
Thank you for that. I'm I'm looking to Public Works folks to see if they have anything to add to that.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. Um yes, I think at the end of the this part of this study, it was very loud and clear that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh that was a previous ask as far as an incremental increase to this was absolutely required. And therefore, without a doubt, included as the recommendation. And we look forward to right sizing and putting this practical plan in place, and then we'll be able to report following that part uh exactly what we would need annually.
Yeah, thanks. Uh one um back to Mr. Canton, I think. I'm trying to see the name there on the screen. Um to your point, you talked about the two point nine uh kind of being the baseline uh in terms of uh of renewal. Does that bring our average fleet age down to the target uh age, or does that just prevent it from continuing to go up?
Uh through through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, what uh you can bring down your average age by using that amount. And essentially, what what the the following steps would be to strategically uh determine uh which assets can be deferred short term and which assets could not. So yes, with that two point nine million, you would uh you would by strategically deciding what which assets to replace and when, you could bring down your your fleet age and then maintain that you're at your appropriate spending level uh moving forward. So fundamentally, um it it's not practical, both fro- from from a financial perspective, uh nor from uh a a a street-level perspective, let's say, from fleet management, to purely um replace assets exactly and precisely at their lifecycle uh due points. And the reason for that, without being able to show it on screen, if uh but graphically, you would get an extremely spiky graph, if you could imagine, where the spending amount in in year A would be dramatically more than year B and which would be less than year C and so forth and so on. Obviously, that's very challenging uh to manage budgets with. But additionally, it becomes very challenging because you would have to in-service assets at extremely varying rates. In some years, there would be more assets than can reasonably be in-service by fleet. And in other years, they wouldn't, they would barely be uh conducting the exercise. So what we would recommend is a process that we we refer to as Plan Smoothening. By benchmarking and and identifying exactly when fleet asset should be replaced and what those replacement costs will be, you can then uh sort of look at how that maps out and determine, okay, let's defer this asset a year. Uh maybe even pull up an asset a year and balance out or smooth out the spending as well as smooth out the in-servicing requirements. And so we can use that amount to to both reduce fleet age with time. It would not happen overnight. It would take, I'm I'm estimating without modeling it, uh but probably five or six years to get to more reasonable um uh you know, or more intended fleet age. And then at that point, you can continue to maintain your replacements. One thing I should have uh said in my previous answer, I did want to make clear is two point nine million is where the fleet uh is 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 based on the fleet that exists today. So certainly, right sizing the fleet and reducing assets would reduce that that cost. Uh however, it's quite natural for for fleet uh size and composition to change over time, right? Additional citizens may require additional vehicles of certain type. Uh you know, et cetera, et cetera. Mission, departmental missions may change. Work that is done in-house today may be outsourced in the future or vice versa. So obviously, as operations change, uh fleet requirements may change. And then obviously, that would have an impact on what we think replacement uh spend would need to be. But as the fleet lives today, based on the work being done today, yes, we, you know, that we feel pretty good that that number is a strong estimate.
Okay, thank you. Those are my question.
Counselor Vezel Allen, next.
Thank you. Um through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Hertug. Um regarding the approach on slide page eight, um the online survey of vehicles. Who uh participated in that online survey? Was it senior management? Were it uh was it our users, mechanics? Could you please elaborate on that?
Yeah, yes, of course. Through you, Mr. Mayor, um the online survey. Uh first of all, it started with a questionnaire, which we um which was approved by uh uh Public Works. And so we posted it on a Mercury Survey Tool uh website. Uh the the respondents uh were actual fleet users because we wanted to know how often they use the vehicle, how many hours uh um did they use that vehicle for per day? Um you know, we wanted to establish the criticality. So it's not just utilization, it's how critical is that piece of equipment? For example, um you know, snow, snow um uh plows, they're not needed in the summer. So but they're critical when the snow falls. So we we um did that both from the points of view of utilization and criticality and the amount of utilization. Because we were looking for low utilization and low criticality assets for potential removal from the fleet or potential reassignment to someone else who needed that vehicle. So it was fleet users. So so that would be operations, parks, landfill and so on.
From your recollection, do you know what the participation rate was in that survey, or that could be possibly a staff question?
Um I can, through you, Mr. Mayor, I can respond to that. We, you know, I was really amazed, but it was uh for a hundred percent of the vehicles that were in scope, we got responses to for a hundred percent of the vehicles that were in scope. And I remember congratulating the team on that.
That that is, that is amazing um survey results. Thank you very much. My only other question um is regarding the review ratings from slide nineteen. Um and this concerns fleet cost and financial management, which was given a rating of one point eight. Could you elaborate on what that entails? I want um it'll be clear that is it the fact that we have not invested enough in terms of financial management? And that it's not any sort of um errors in terms of financial management from a um accounting perspective?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um I wanted to respond to that by saying that it was due to two things, top of mind, two things. There were some minor items, but top of mind, two things. One was the replacement plan. Um replacement plan was um uh was um n- not what we expected to see. Um and the second was that um the the chargeback to the to the client groups, which I mentioned before. So uh the chargeback was not a full pass-through of costs. And this um whole concept of chewing up um at the end of the year by using funding from the client groups, it does not allow cost transparency to the clients. So those were the reasons, top of mind reasons, why we were rating that practice uh low.
And in terms of the uh chargeback to the to the cost user groups, have you made some recommendations to staff in um correcting that?
Um through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we have. We've uh recommended a rate um chargeback methodology development. Um the as I said earlier, different organizational realities can lead you to different r- rate chart, uh chargeback rate methodologies. So for example, uh when I was working uh as a managing director of fleet for a a large corporation, uh we had total cost transparency. We passed through to the client every dime that was spent on maintenance and repair and what we were charging them for management fees. Because there is always overhead, right? So so but that worked because in that corporation, we had a very strong FMIS, uh Fleet Management Information System, through which we could capture every cost, sublet cost, two-dollar part cost and so on. That may not be appropriate for other organizations. So we, what we do for them is we look at their total cost and try to just cost allocate it out to the the user groups. And there's, you know, many variations on that theme. So what we have recommended to staff is um a rate, a a chargeback rate development methodology and as well annually reviewing that and modifying it because costs don't uh stay the same. And and uh and the rate plan that is currently used um is is fairly old. I don't think it's been updated for many years. So.
Wonderful. Thank you. I think Mr. Girardi wants to add something.
Certainly, I uh through you, Mr. Mayor, to council, I just want to give you some clarification on how this system works. Basically, our user groups are our Parks Department, our Operations Department. So it's like we're running our own little rental. We rent out a truck to our Parks Department. They take it out for the day. I just didn't want there to be some confusion that there's other user groups out there. User groups are our own teams. We just and and as as been uh mentioned, you know, we need to get a rate uh and we're charging those departments, but it's all internal charges and goes right back to budget. I can charge you whatever, but if you don't have the budget to cover it. So I just wanted to make sure there was some clarification there for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi, and tha- and thank you, Mr. Ger- uh, Mr. Mayor, I have no other questions.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Um through you, Mayor, um to the consultants first, yes, it's a very well-written presentation. A lot of information to digest. And um I like the comment about um unfortunately, we have a deficit or deficient vehicles, um just like in our roads. But anyway, my first question um to the consultants through you, Mayor, when you were looking at these costs, um were you um looking at these costs, these replacement costs based on North American purchasing of vehicles or were you looking at hypothetically offshore purchasing?
Um so I'll turn that question uh to Mark Canton. Um so, but just to give you the overview, um the purchasing cost we look at for vehicles is of, is the current price, if you will, plus inflation. So that, that's generally, that's how we do it. Uh Mark, if you wanted to add something to that.
Yeah, so uh through you, Mr. Mayor, um quite intend- intentionally so that our costs are uh reflect real world costs and, and reasonable expectations as opposed to some sort of hypothetical or ideal. We work with the folks in the fleet program to identify the replacement costs of the assets. So that's done a number of ways. Obviously, as my colleague uh referred to, we will look at original purchase price of existing assets and uh perform calculations to inflate those costs. However, in addition to that, we will look at, oh, if we simply went out and bought the, the equivalent vehicle today, what would that cost be? And that's truly the replacement cost. And we do that in a collaborative way and have that vetted by the fleet organization on this or any study, precisely so that it reflects what the cost would be to that fleet organization. So for example, uh most government entities have access to contract or, or other pre-negotiated pricing for a large portion, if not most, for all of their fleet. And so that pricing uh will run in place either over the course of a year or several years. And many cases, even the upfitting uh where, when it's done externally, uh will be pre-negotiated for a certain quantity of units. Uh and so that, that represents a, a, a price that's been agreed upon and exists in contract. Therefore, it's an appropriate price to use in the case of the city because it reflects what they will actually purchase the vehicle for.
Okay, very good information. Um couple more other questions. Um going through you, Mayor, to Mr. Girardi. Um just picking up on what he just commented on, that if we're purchasing a few vehicles at once, I believe you currently try to purchase vehicles through our local, I believe, local dealers. And I believe that if we move ahead with this, you most likely will continue to look at our local dealers. Is, can you elaborate on how you see that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to council, we, we, we follow procurement policy. So it goes out for tender and the locals, there's some local and there's some non-local. Uh that uh and we go to the success, the successful one, obviously. So there are a lot of local uh vendors that have been successful. But the tendering process is public and it's open to anyone to submit to. So um we do have local and non-local you know, providers.
Okay. And to add on to that, Mr. Girardi, um granted, our fleet uh has unique vehicles. Like some are not just vans, some are not just like, you know, Ford trucks or so forth. Some were snowplows, I believe. And that unfortunately can't always be bid by a local dealer because they're so unique. Can you educate us or myself on uh snowplows? Um they're aging. Is that something that usually we purchase from a North American base or is that offshore? I just have curiosity.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to council, no, actually, we have locals that uh have uh, you know, that might be the supplier of international or, or a certain other type of truck. And uh they follow through the tendering process and they have been successful. Keep in mind also that our plow trucks are not just plow trucks. We use them in the winter time to plow. We take the plows off. And in the summer, they're used for any type of construction. So there's a, there's a lot of organizations that just run a plow truck and keep it as a plow truck. We do both. We, we just remove the plows and use it for both services.
Okay. Um another question to you, Mr. Girardi, or maybe to the consultants. With this wonderful experience these consultants have, um the number of different municipalities they have worked with, is this an opportunity for us to see some more efficient um fleets, more efficient processes on snow, snow removal? I know in the past, we talked about some better practices, um so that snow is not always going to a person's driveway or a large um ice bits are not going to be piling up. And I understand and appreciate that it's snowplows we use are also used in the summer and so forth, so forth. But is this an opportunity, if we are replacing our fleet, to maybe look at more modern, efficient ways, a more modern fleet um around snow to have a better process? And is there an opportunity to learn what other municipalities, not just in Canada, but elsewhere?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council, though, keep in mind that this uh survey and, and the process that we just went through with Mercury was just to look at the right sizing of the process of getting through this and making sure that what we're doing is right and what changes that uh they've recommended we can work towards. And of course, it comes down to funding. So uh it really has nothing to do with our winter control and how we're, our efficiencies for in winter control. Quite frankly, uh I'm quite proud to say that I think our efficiencies in our winter program are far better than most. And, and I can stand by that. I know there are those issues, as you mentioned. I don't know, uh this is the council or the time, but the uh you're always going to have some areas where you can improve and we work towards that. Um but as far as I'm concerned, right now, what we're working on today is just to try and get our fleet age uh to a more appropriate age. Uh so that we're not called aged as it was in the program. Uh and that we can move forward with some newer equipment and uh reduce our costs. So that's uh kind of where we stand.
Okay. And the question to our consultants, if I'm reading this report correctly, it does sound like you are suggesting compressed natural gas um versus uh fossil fuels. Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, no, we're not. Uh the, the compressed natural gas is a topic um that comes up. Um and, and we know, for example, City of Toronto has for their waste, solid waste trucks, converted many vehicles, not converted, but acquired many CNG vehicles, right? What, what we were trying to say, and I've assisted, um you know, American uh clients with CNG vehicles. It is a very complex business. So unless you, unless an organization wants to buy like hundreds, you know, there has to be some critical mass for which you're going to install your own CNG stations, uh fueling stations and for which you're going to upgrade your facility to a CNG facility. So it is definitely not our recommendation uh per se. It was just covered as something to be aware of. You know, you'll hear CNG, oh wow, this is great. Except the prerequisites are you got to retrain your mechanics and even your sublet vendors, outsourcing vendors that you're using. They must be CNG trained. Uh there are safety concerns. You must have access to fueling stations for CNG. And the facility, the garage facility needs to be upgraded to do any kind of major repair. Uh this facility needs to be compliant with the CNG requirements. So it's definitely not our recommend, we are not recommending to go to CNG at this point in time.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And my last question, um I do agree with what you're suggesting. I'm always been on board to make sure that we're efficient. Um but my last question is um, I'm also believer in um zero emissions if possible or as best as we can. I also am a great believer in practicing green practices. And so having said that, um are we looking at some electrical vehicles? And um did we get into a ratio or can you comment on that, on, on how this can also help with our reduced emissions?
Um through you, Mr. Mayor, um if the question is addressed to us, to the consultants, then um that was not part of the scope. I'm being fairly direct. Uh so it's not part of our scope. Um uh to, to assess what mix of electric vehicles and so on. My point, my point will still remain uh about uh making sure, you know, before that is entertained, to make sure that there is uh enough expertise on electric vehicles. I know when I was working at the City of Toronto, that was a big challenge. So we, we did get a few, very few electric vehicles and we got fa- fast charging stations and so on. But you know, having qualified mechanics who could work on electric vehicles was a, was a, a big challenge.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, against Hollings with counsel Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to the consultant and thank you for your report. Forty-five percent of our, of the vehicles are nine years and older. Twenty-three percent are beyond their expected lifespan. The, the average annual fleet replacement cost uh in the report states two point, two point nine million. But thirty-three percent of our vehicles next year will exceed their recommended age. And that's a cost of ten point five million. So I guess my, my question is, it says in the report, the years of a replacement backlog is four point nine. Is this achievable? And, and say five years, we, we can be up to par wi- with our fleet?
So, so Mark, uh through you, Mr. Mayor, I will ask my colleague Mark to comment on that, please.
Uh yes, it, it is achievable. Um you know, again, that, that represents statistics as the fleet uh lives today. If, if you can increase your amount of replacement spend, and I want to be clear, uh you know, as I mentioned earlier, there are alternative ways to, to finance uh vehicle acquisitions. So the key is on the, the ultimate spend. But yes, if you increase the spend to the appropriate levels uh within approximately five years, I believe you will have addressed the backlog. In addressing the backlog, remember uh just to, at a point of detail, a backlog vehicle is a vehicle that is today passed due for replacement. So certainly in addressing the backlog, you will um you will defer assets that would have otherwise come due. However, we have shown, uh we have experienced uh many, many hundreds of times over that through, through doing that strategically, what, what can be done is address the backlog as it exists today, which generally speaking are for assets that are quite a bit uh older than just a year or two deferred. You do that by temporarily deferring the replacement of assets that are still yet to come due for replacement. Uh you make sure that that deferral is not extended in any way. It might be a year or two. Uh you try to minimize that deferral and then you address those deferrals uh as you go along. Inevitably, because you have uh many different classes of vehicles and therefore uh those classes will have varying life cycles. If you simply mapped out the replacement of every vehicle, again, as I mentioned earlier, you would have a very spiky graph because some assets might need to be replaced in seven years and others in ten and others in twelve. Uh and so by, but however, by mapping that out and benchmarking it, you can then use uh you know, years where there would o- otherwise be light replacements as well as the method I discussed ear- earlier, deferral. And, and you know, certainly much less frequently, but occasionally, you might even accelerate the replacement of a certain asset by a year or so. Um in order to properly um create this smooth replacement. But yes, forgive me for the long answer, but the most direct answer is yes, it is possible to address uh the backlog and to maintain appropriate uh replacement long forward.
So to address this, is two hundred fifty thousand dollars enough?
No, no. Part, pardon me for jumping the gun there. Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Um no, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is again, it will help. It's better than adding nothing to the spend. However, it is, it is not enough to address the backlog. If you, if you only add that amount, uh again, as the fleet sits today, you will simply um, you know, you will, you will help, but your, your backlog will, will stick around for a great many years. Uh much more than five years, probably. Clo- you know, you know, i- it's difficult to say without doing the math and outdoing the analysis. But based on my experience, it, it may never go away.
Okay. Uh in, in your report, you stated uh each department, operations, parks, landfill, traffic, building administration, mechanical and stores. You uh, how many vehicles per department, we'll call them departments? In the study, has it been stated how many vehicles can be eliminated?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we've, uh in one of our slides, we do mention how many vehicles can be eliminated by department. I'm just trying to find the slide number, but um uh let me just see. Yes, it has been stated.
So if we pass this tonight, uh Mr. Mayor, I maybe question the C O or to Mr. Girardi. Do we take the recommendations of the report, vehicles that have to be removed? Or yeah, removed from operations or is this, we will wait until twenty twenty-two?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to council, uh keep in mind that there was fourteen vehicles that have to be eliminated, but they're not to be eliminated the next day. These have to be phased out. Actually, up to date right now, four are gone already. Four broke down, they're out of our system. We're just not going to replace them. So we know the numbers, we know the pieces that have been recommended. We're just not going to replace them. But as was said earlier, I believe, uh it's not something that you can just say, okay, in this budget year, let's get rid of these, the, the remaining ten. No, we still need those vehicles, but as they go, they won't be replaced.
Won't be.
Okay, because again, we keep vehicles because our age, uh the age of our fleet. So we need something to replace it. So if it was newer, it wouldn't be breaking down. But when it breaks down, we're in a storm, I need another truck or I need parts off of it. I keep it and I keep the fleet going, so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I just want to go back to one thing because you did mention the two hundred fifty, if we got to two hundred fifty thousand. Uh the resolution itself has says that uh we're supposed to get two hundred and, in twenty twenty, we were supposed to get two fifty. And then, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we received two fifty. So we were supposed to get two fifty more in twenty twenty-one. And then we were applying and requesting another two fifty in twenty twenty-two. And again, it all has to be referred to budget. I realize that, but I just wanted to make sure the resolution
Yeah.
was stated and was presented to council.
Thank you. Is that it, counselor?
That's it.
Thank you. So I have two left on my list. I have counsel Nero than counsel Dufo. Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you for the presentation, Ms. Hurtig. And I have a question relating to the cost benching uh slide. I believe it's page fifteen on the we use range for other municipalities, twenty-four hundred to thirty-eight hundred and ours, us fifty-four to fifty-six. A little troubled by the word, reasons for the high costs are, although I, I most likely agree with those being costs, but with a detailed report such as this, like what other reasons for this high cost could there be? Did your, your study look at, an in-depth look at, at the causes for the high cost or? Uh and again, it's the word probable that, that brings the question out.
Um the, w- we looked at the um, through you, Mr. Mayor, we looked at the major cost drivers. And based on what we were seeing, uh we felt the high costs uh high costs are due to the aging fleet, based on our experience and uh the other items we've mentioned on that. So um there could be other reasons, but those were the most probable reasons that we could think of based on our experience. Um Mark, if you want to add something?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor, um both in, in part because of the scope of the study and in part because of the availability of data, of data, uh because of, you know, just keeping in mind issues as mentioned earlier with the there's not a dedicated fleet management information system. Not every possible um potential cause uh you know, could be followed up on. So for example, we, we don't have data uh to indicate uh that perhaps uh vehicles are sitting, let's say, in the shop too long and that could obviously drive costs. These are things that uh we're not with, you know, we, we were not able to calculate. Uh so certainly there could be other, you know, s- uh reasons of that nature. I'm sure if, 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 you know, if we hired uh maintenance and repair, uh you know, subject matter experts and monitored every shop uh and sat there uh for weeks and days and months on end. uh and sat there uh for weeks and days and months on end, we could find many, many reasons for, you know, many, many opportunities for improved efficiencies and and so forth and so on. However, the the juice wasn't worth the squeeze or isn't worth the squeeze from a cost perspective for the city to to try to identify all of those potential cost drivers. Uh it was it was pretty clear from the data that we did have and the information we did have through the various interview processes that the reasons that are noted here are the main drivers of the high costs. And so, you know, forgive us if perhaps our addiction wasn't um as perfect as it could been, but that is what really was intended uh by probable. This is to say that these are the primary, these are these are reasons that we can see uh within the information and the data that we have. However, we don't intend it to mean necessarily that it is an exhaustive list of all of the reasons uh for higher costs.
Okay, good, good. Thank you for that answer. And further to uh some comments that were made earlier in relation to the process that we use uh for snow plowing and we use our dump trucks for earth movers in the summertime, and there's the same trucks that do the plowing in the wintertime. Would that be a probable cause of a high cost of of maintenance as well? Uh are we alone in in that use of using vehicles for dual purposes?
So I'll start that through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start the the answering process. So no, it's not uncommon to see multi uses for the same vehicle. Um we did not go into the details uh of, you know, how the vehicle is being used and what cost is really driving out, is the cost more or less? We did not go into that level of detail by for the snowplows. But it's not uncommon to see a vehicle being repurposed, if you will, by the using the right attachment or the right box in the back or whatever it may be. Um uh it's not unusual. Mark, did you want to add anything or Tony?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll just simply add that um certain certain vehicle types um lend themselves to higher costs as they age. So if you might imagine, i- i- the result might be somewhat of what we would call an exponential effect. So in the case of snowplows, for example, if you imagine their use and how they're used and when they're used and why they're used, uh to put it bluntly, they are the type of vehicle that gets beat up uh qu- quite a bit. And so when you have a vehicle of that nature, other examples are sanitation trucks, uh they get beat up quite a bit. And so it is not uncommon in other studies that we've conducted to find a sort of exponential effect of vehicle age with vehicles of that type. That is to say that since they are vehicles that get beat up regularly by the nature of their use, and this is not to imply that the operator did something wrong necessarily. It's 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 fundamental to the to the work being done in in most and many cases. Uh but but when that is in fact the case, that in other words, it's it's a hard use as the vehicle age and goes even further beyond its life cycle, the the impact of that is certainly going to be felt. And so it's not uh the the best way I can ex- express it is that in my experience, it's it's not an uncommon phenomenon uh to see high costs uh, you know, when when you have that kind of a set of circumstances. Hopefully, I've answered your question.
Yeah. I think you have. Thank you. And I think just as a supplemental to that answer, in your studies, would you have found that it makes more sense to use a piece of equipment strictly for snow plowing and then another piece of equipment to do the earth moving in the summer? Would that extend the lives of both vehicles and and save costs in the long run?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh certainly it depends on your goal. Uh if the goal is to extend the life of the vehicles, uh there is no doubt that that approach uh would be more effective in, you know, uh ob- obviously, right? You would use the vehicle less, they would get to use my own earlier vernacular, beat up less, uh and certainly it would extend their life. However, um without the benefit of being able to to flash some some graphs on screen, fundamentally, when you're when you're modeling the costs and the economic costs of a vehicle, if you took that approach, more than likely, uh it would uh and obviously, you would have to do the math to determine this. It's certainly a reasonable thing to consider. Um but it's my experience that oftentimes, because of the capital cost of the asset,
Yes.
uh it's a less efficient use of resources. That is to say that if you had to buy, let's say, twice the amount of assets, right? The moment you acquire a vehicle, it begins to depreciate. And so even if you never use it or never touch it, it is costing you money. Uh even if you never perform a single repair or a single uh preventative maintenance routine, it is costing you money because that vehicle is depreciation sheerly by existing over time. And so because of that, um you know, certainly, i- i- I'm not I'm not here to suggest that all vehicles and all assets uh be utilized to the, you know, to the nth degree at all costs, but certainly maximizing the utilization of the vehicle by by having multiple purposes for it. Uh generally speaking, will will lead to a much more economical use of resources, uh you know, a- as a result.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Dufour.
Thanks, Mr. Um I had a follow-up question for uh Mark. Uh so through you, Mr. Mayor, um Mark, you you kind of alluded to this in uh your answer to Counselor Shoemaker. But can you tell us exactly how your company uh advises clients on the benefits of leasing versus owning? Um and on kind of how debt financing can accelerate uh our backlog, like clearing of our backlog?
Sure, through through you, Mr. Mayor, so um to answer your first question on on how we advise, uh step one, we always recommend is in is is simply modeling the costs. So uh this might be because there's a standing offer or an existing vendor that is providing service to the city or the fleet organization, or potentially going out and gathering several reasonable quotes. And so you might gain uh things like, well, what is your, you know, what is your your interest rate? What is your cost of capital, so to speak? Uh you you want to use a discount rate uh because obviously, there's an opportunity cost whenever you use a a large portion of capital. Um what are the various management fees or other leasing fees that may be involved in leasing? And so what we would recommend is is simply modeling those costs. Okay, here's what it will cost you year over year uh for cash purchases uh for using uh, you know, debt finance. So again, you take an interest rate uh and you model it over a potential term of that loan, and you do the same uh with leasing. Generally speaking, with leasing, one of the factors that comes into play, ju- I think it's safe to say, and it's not always the case, but generally speaking, for the same organization, uh fleet leasing will cost a little bit more than than debt financing directly. And so then the question becomes, uh is it is it in the best interest of the fleet organization to pay that additional cost because of the potential value that comes along with that cost? So for example, by using a leasing company, you get many of the functions that are often performed by the fleet management group uh can be performed for you. Uh so uh identifying a vehicle, managing a replacement plan, uh ordering the vehicle, they can assist with specking the vehicle, which is to develop the appropriate set of specifications for the vehicle use. They'll assist with disposing the vehicle, running auctions, uh you know, all sorts of things, contracting with upfitting vendors and so forth and so on. And so it generally, you know, when uh a fleet organization either does does not have those skills in-house or those resources in-house from a staff power uh perspective, then that can be a good idea to pay for that additional cost. And in those cases where that expertise and 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 that those resources do exist in-house, generally speaking, uh that unless there are some other strategic uh gain to be had. Uh for example, in the corporate world, uh y- there might be some tax benefit or some other management benefit associated with leasing. But unless there's some sort of gain to be had, some sort of value to be had, uh then the question becomes, is the additional cost of leasing uh worth it with regards to the other uh financing opportunities? So so fundamentally, it's 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 modeling uh those various costs and then comparing them and then and then looking at them. Uh what I alluded to earlier with debt financing is is um you know, it it's it's just that, right? Obviously, if uh if if you or I go out and, let's say, purchase a vehicle or an asset for fifty thousand dollars, if we make that purchase with cash, uh we will spend fifty thousand dollars. Uh if we make that purchase with debt financing, we will make the equivalent of twelve months' worth of payments on that loan, and it certainly won't be fifty thousand dollars even for uh the poorest credit organizations. And so what you have is if the intent was from a budgetary speci- uh perspective to spend fifty thousand dollars on a vehicle, and in fact, you spend, let's say, ten thousand dollars, is you've generated a budgetary savings. And so you can model that, and so that you're aware fully of the economic impacts, the long-term impacts. Obviously, there's interest to be paid uh as well as the uh uh the short-term impacts and the budgetary uh impacts. What we find is there's often quite a bit of budgetary savings to be had. Obviously, I haven't modeled this for your fleet, so I'm speaking on experience with other uh similar fleets. Especially when going from a purely cash purchasing model uh to a debt financing model. Um and and again, you can model this and you can you can recognize, you can realize what potential budgetary savings are out there and what could be used, what those funds could be used for, et cetera, et cetera. Uh one of the things I will say from a sort of um discipline or behavioral perspective is organizations that use debt or lease financing or even reserve fund financing um properly, let's say, uh essentially because they've adopted a, let's call it a pay-as-you-go method for uh for paying down the capital cost of those vehicles. We find that they tend to be much more disciplined with regards to the very issue we're discussing now, which is replacing vehicles in a timely fashion. And that's in in large part because sort of it's built in, right? You have terms, uh generally speaking, the term of the loan will match or approximate the expected life of the vehicle, and so there'll be a sort of a built-in discipline into the into the processes that make it more likely that you are to continue to replace vehicles in a timely fashion. Have I answered your question, sir?
Uh yes, very thoroughly. I guess uh my my next question is uh through the mayor, perhaps to the C E O or Director of Finance. Um for specifically Sue Saint Marie to get this deeper level of modeling in terms of where that sweet spot is of being able to replace enough of our fleet that we're making a difference without incurring entire levy impact in a single year. Um who who do we go to through for this? Is this part of the resolution to have the folks from Mercury do it, or is this something that we do in-house before we make that uh full decision?
Through through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Dufour, and I'll let the CFO add anything uh. Uh but the as uh the pres- presenters have mentioned, this would be part of the work that we are asking or recommending that Mercury do with staff. On that, you have to remember that uh the different uh elements uh for financing are not necessarily just levy uh related. Uh we do have landfill reserve and uh other avenues that we can look at raising the funds as well. But overall, there's a lot of different approaches here, and we do need to do some modeling. Then staff would work with Mercury if the recommendations are approved.
Will we be able to get that modeling back before we have approved the full slate of increases to the Public Works Equipment Reserve, or is it foreseen that?
I don't anticipate that if the CFO has a different answer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Dufour. No, as as the C E O has indicated, we'd have to look at all of the options and the funding. And from what I'm hearing from Mercury, it's very important that we look at the right size of the fleet before we start looking at fully funding an estimated high-level estimate of two point nine million. Um we also, just to clarify, I know you asked a question about lease versus buy. That is something that we actually do right now um with a lot of the public works equipment, where we can get a lease price. So we always look at the best option, and we also consider uh qualitative factors as well, uh especially when the lease lease versus buy costs are are very similar. So um there is a lot to uh unpack and go through with the recommendations. And I would hope, I mean, we're not going to have it, obviously, for this budget, but I would hope over the next year, we um Public Works can answer this better, but we might have a better path forward and provide something for the twenty twenty-three budget.
Thank you very much. Uh my last question um just was uh for our own Public Works staff or the C E O. Um have we considered building our own fleet management information system, either internally or through the Innovation Center? Or is that something that would automatically have to be procured from the outside?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh I don't know that we've uh there's sorry to Counselor Dufour, I don't know that we've uh considered that yet. Uh but obviously, as we work through the process with Mercury on refining our processes and looking to see exactly what we need for a fleet management information system, we can uh uh better judge at that time, whether it's something we need to go to an outside vendor, whether it is something that we can either refine what we have now or recheck and uh look at perhaps a local provider like the Innovation Center. I think, did I see the uh
C E O? Certainly, uh through you, Mr. Mayor to uh Counselor Dufour. We presently use Worktech, and Worktech just doesn't seem to have all the bells and whistles, and it's old. Uh so we would probably work with uh Mercury to decide whether or not we can get add-ons to this existing package that would is would assist us. To actually go ahead and build your own system, I think that'd be extremely difficult. I'm not an I T person. Certainly someone like Frank, uh he might cringe when we say things like that, but uh uh it would be a very challenging undertaking, but perhaps there are options uh with using our existing package.
Thank you all very much. That's all. And Counselor Dufour, counsel, any more questions on this topic? Seeing that, I'd like to thank uh our presenters and the consultants for for working with our staff in the report. Like to acknowledge Public Works staff. It's my understanding that uh uh the team we brought in to to look at this with you is really impressed by how engaged Public Works was uh and how open it was to to reviewing this and analyzing this. And I think that's critical, and I want to commend you for that. And I think we've got a really good roadmap and a good, uh really good piece of information report to move forward. And I think this is what we've all collectively been trying to do. And it's nice to see that we're aligned with staff and we're working towards the same goals. I want to commend staff in that respect. Thank you, counsel, for your thoroughness on this issue tonight. It's been near an hour, and I think that uh is the end of it, so we can move on with our agenda, and uh Madam Clerk will read the resolution.
I have a motion back, Councilors Bruny and Hillsinger, resolved that the report of the Director of Public Works stated October twenty-five, twenty twenty-one concerning fleet management study be received and that counsel approved the fleet services review in principle. Further, that the requests of an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Public Works Equipment Reserve, thirty thousand dollars advisory service in relation to the replacement plan, single source to Mer- Mercury Associates, and one hundred thousand dollar fee to Mercury it uh so Mercury Associates to focus on streamlining work processes and determining our most efficient mode of future operation, they refer to twenty twenty-two budget deliberations.
All in favor? Any pose, none? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you for your time and tonight, uh tense as night. Madam Clerk, I think that brings us to the consent agenda.
That's correct.
Counselor Shoemaker, you're the first one with your hand up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Vare, uh six point five quote for three forty-foot buses.
Go ahead, Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Vare. Um the price per uh unit uh is listed here somewhere five hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred and seven dollars plus H S T. And this i- this was priced through uh the kind of group uh purchasing uh system we entered into with Metrolinks. And so I'm wondering, is the five ninety-two, three oh seven cheaper than when we priced these things on our own last year uh outside of the Metrolinks group?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to uh Counselor Shoemaker, we do have um uh Brent Lamming on the line, uh so Brent's prepared to answer that question.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Shoemaker. Yes, it is a bit higher. The purchase price per unit now is five hundred ninety-two thousand. Prior, uh back in twenty twenty, the units were five hundred fifty-nine thousand, including the cameras. Uh the reason for the change is as a big COVID impact, especially on rising costs for inputs, mainly steel. Uh the group buying uh purchase group here is represents fifty-two municipalities and fellow municipalities like North Bay, Temiskamine, uh Thunder Bay and Sidbury. So if we didn't use Metrolinks, we would anticipate this cost would have been substantially higher than what uh the deal uh was that we have before us uh here.
Is there any way of determining um what what some municipality out there that isn't using Metrolinks is paying for a bus? I I don't expect you'll have that information at your fingertips, but would you be able to uh compile information of that nature?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Shoemaker. Yes, we could reach out to our transit consulting network to uh to get that information and and provide it to you.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question on that matter. You're on.
That's six five. Counselor Gardi and Counselor Christian.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, through you to, I guess, Mr. Lamming. The report had mentioned that in order to accommodate the overage, the procurement of one pair of buses can be deferred. I was just hoping you could describe a bit about the status of our current pair of buses, how many we have, how old each of them are, and what condition would you describe they are in currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gardi. We still have two slated for this year, another one in the plan to come forward in budget. So compared to the conventional fleet of both 13 years, the pair of buses is a little bit newer. So by foregoing this, we still feel that we're going to be in a reasonable range for age. And we do have them scheduled out to 2026 of purchases. So we feel that that is a is a reasonable trade off in order to make sure that we go forward on the 40 foot buses.
Thank you.
Counsel Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just just to be clear, Mr. Lamming, through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lamming. So the 84,000 overage, to be clear, is a result of us underestimating what the costs were going to be for the three buses?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. Yes, since the budget had gone in, there had been quite a substantial increase in in the input costs. Steel right now is at a record near ton price per ton. So that's really kind of had an impact on the inputs and the bus infrastructure to build. So going forward with future good budgets, we will make sure that that's anticipated into the the numbers that are being used.
Thank you. We've got this deal with Metrolink. So do we see preferred pricing simply because we're part of that? That association or is pricing based on the number of buses that are ordered at any given time through that organization?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. Through Metrolinks, they have their own tending process to go out to select a provider. So in this case, it's Nova, and they won that bid, and we have the right to go forward. They put out a call for for a number of buses to be procured at any one time. And so we decided to move forward with that recommendation because we needed buses this year. So we have the right to participate or not, but they have their own tendering process to get the best value using the scale of the 50 plus municipalities that participate.
One final question. This, these are 40 foot buses. I assume those are the large, the larger version of a transit bus, correct? And Mike, I guess if they are. Are they absolutely necessary? Have we given thought to smaller buses? I mean, anecdotally, I mean, I'm certainly not a manager of transit, but just looking at capacity on these buses and looking occasionally at occupancy, they don't often look full. So I'm just wondering, is there any thought to looking at smaller buses to help reduce costs?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. Yes, that's a good point. We have one 35 foot bus that we're having in the hopper right now. We also have another another one for next year. So we are using that avenue to decrease the size for certain situations, but we do have a need on heavier routes for the 40 foot buses.
Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on this matter, Counselor, on this matter? Nobody else on this night, or Counselor Shoemaker, was it for your matters?
I've got one other matter, Mr. Mayor. 6.9, the waste collection options study through you to Mr. Girardi or Ms. Hamilton Beach. The province isn't mandating the collection of of organic waste until 2025. And so I'm just wondering, is it going to take, do we anticipate it's going to take, you know, four years to get this system set up and and get it right? Or are we starting this so that we can so that we can start collecting organics ahead of schedule?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. I think the biggest part of this process will be the actual tendering of the vehicles, which is taking 18 months to potentially even two years at this point in time, a year without a doubt. But in COVID times, it's extraordinary. So we just wanted to have the solution that we were going to go with, which may also may feed some design options for the actual plant. So the more answers we can have in advance of actually starting construction of either the plant and or obviously our model, we thought best.
Okay, yes, that sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Counsel Christian.
Give Mr. Mayor through you to the speech. In, I guess, September 30th, 2023, recycling is going to be the responsibility of the province. Do we have any indication at this point what it's going to look like? Or we just simply know that the time horizon is to when the province is going to take over that responsibility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. I myself and well as my waste management staff have been in attendance of every webinar possible on this topic. The term common collection system is what is being used. The exact design features to that, if it will be determined geographically or by a contractor, et cetera, it is all yet to be determined. So we're trying to be at the forefront of it. Still, we're many more questions and answers.
Yeah, thank you. I suspected that, but I wanted to ask one final question. One of the things we're looking at is consideration of biweekly collection. And I know it's early, but when you make that statement, are you referring to waste and or bio solids?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. I believe what is more the common solution is to have organics collected weekly and your waste, which would in fact be dry, collected biweekly. We know we've had this question of Counselor several times. So to have that now integrated and considered at best, this timing was very suitable.
Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else in 6.9? That's it for you, Counselor Shoemaker. Counselor Christian, you're next on my list.
Those were the two items, and I'm done.
Okay, Counselor Vazal.
I just have two items, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor. First is 6.3.
Go ahead.
I'm just wanting to really, one comment, thank the team at Finance. We've gotten through the third quarter in COVID times in a pretty healthy capacity. And I don't know if it's you, Michelle, if you could just give some highlights in terms of of taking advantage of some of the funding that's been available, as well as where we're recouping some savings, especially in terms of, you know, travel and training and some staffing levels at the community centers and that sort of thing.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vazal. And a lot of the highlights are provided in your report. Some of the key things to note, though, you will see in Appendix A, the implications of the COVID funding. So it's important to note right now as well. We do have for operating about $2.8 million that we're forecasting to the end of the year for shortfalls based on COVID implications. We only have about $1.8 million of safe restart funding available. And that includes the amounts that the province announced last December. So we will have to go into our tax stabilization reserve at this point to to cover that approximately $1 million balance. From the transit side for COVID, we have sufficient funding to manage that with our safe restart funding. So we're not anticipating any kind of major surplus to the end of the year. But if you have any questions on any of the variances, I'll be more than happy to take them, or please feel free to reach out to me later.
Thank you, Michelle.
Is that it on that matter, Counselor Vazal?
Yes, it is. And I just have one more.
Yeah, but anybody else on 6.3? Go ahead, Counselor Vazal.
6.7, the Downtown Plaza Task Force. I would like to put my name forward to be one of the council representatives on that task force.
Very well.
And Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hollinsworth has also indicated an interest in being appointed to that.
We have two spots in that respect?
That's correct.
Okay, so if nobody else is going to put their name for Counselor Hillsinger?
Well, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
We should separate that from consent then, because we will need to do a simultaneous recorded one.
So what is there a problem? Mr. CEO, if we have three counselors in the task force? You're counting on the number of staff on there right now, aren't you?
I am, Mr. Mayor. It's a task force, so we do need to have more than 50% of staff. Just by a glance here, it seems to me that we do have that if we have three counselors plus yourself.
I'll tell you this. So let's go with all three counselors, and if you determine you don't have enough staff, I will step down from it to to give them the space to do it. Because you were planning for three of us in any event, because I was one of them.
So by the numbers, Mr. Mayor, looks like we're fine.
Okay, so then I'll propose it'll be Counselor Hollinsworth, Counselor Vazal, and Counselor Hillsinger. And if there's room, myself. If there's not, I will step back. So we no longer have to remove that from the table.
I have no other matters.
Anybody else on that matter? Do we have any other matters on consent, counsel? We'll go with Counselor Gardi and Counselor Dufour. Counselor Gardi?
6.10, plastic free pledge. And I'm going to be honest that I was disappointed by the results of the plastic free pledge. I don't think it was promoted to the degree that it should have been. I don't know that there was that there was any significant encouragement within the corporation of the City of St. Marie to encourage its workers and members to participate in the pledge. I have no idea if the City of St. Marie directly reached out to community partners like post-secondary institutions, school boards, social services administration board, Chamber of Commerce, PUC, et cetera, to explain the pledge or to help or to help communicate it within their employee groups or to their members or their communities. I'm also disappointed, frankly, that only two city counselors, which I know are solely the mover and the seconder, namely myself and Counselor Hillsinger, signed the pledge despite it getting unanimous support from the people around this table. I'm of the opinion that the education piece did not work. Then when it comes to the environment, we have to act swiftly and act boldly. I think Counselor Hillsinger would agree with me on that. And I'm looking forward to the notice notice of motion that will be discussed at our next council meeting that is referred to later in the agenda and encourage fellow counselors and you, Mr. Mayor, to support the efforts in the elimination of single use plastics in our community, despite the intention of the federal government. Thanks.
Anybody else in 6.10? Anything else, Counselor Gardi?
That's it.
Counsel Dufour.
6.11.
Go go ahead.
I just had a question for Ms. Fields. She's available.
She's right here.
Oh, hiding behind Sandra. Thanks, Ms. Fields, for the report. I just wanted to clarify, will you be alerting counsel should the suit be certified?
Yes, but through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Dufour, I'll watch this, and I'll be also reaching out to the two representative plaintiffs to find out what's happening. And as we know, more information, I'll be passing that along.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anybody on 6.11? Any other counselors with others in consent? See none, Madam Clerk?
I have a motion by counselors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that all the items listed under date October 25, 2021, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda, be approved as recommended.
All in favor? That brings us to 7.8.1. Correct?
7.8.1 is, there is actually a bylaw for those appointments, so that will be read with the bylaws under Agenda Item 11.
So that brings us to 8.1.
That's correct. Agenda Item 8.1 is a notice of motion with respect to elimination of plastics moved by Counselor Hillsinger and seconded by Counselor Gardi. Whereas City Council has since January of 2020 shown its strong desire to see the reduction and elimination of plastic bags and other plastics in our community. And whereas City Council has now received the report from staff on the elimination of plastic bags from the motion dated September 25, 2021. And whereas the report shows that the plastic pledge has not achieved the desired result to see residents and businesses adopt the pledge. And whereas numerous provinces and cities in Canada, including Nova Scotia, Prince Edward Island, Newfoundland, and Labrador, Montreal, Jasper, Prince Albert, Vancouver, Edmonton, and Regina, among others, either have or will soon have bans on plastic bags and other plastics. Now therefore be it resolved that staff will undertake what is required to put a plastics ban in place in St. Marie effective May 1, 2022 on the following items at a minimum, plastic grocery bags used in grocery stores, retail, and restaurants, plastic straws and stir sticks, plastic cutlery, plastic takeout food containers used by restaurants. In addition to the plastics ban, staff will create a community waste reduction strategy with robust goals to be approved by City Council and even placed by May 1, 2022. So that motion will appear on the November 15 agenda. And that will bring us to Agenda Item 11. Consideration and passage of bylaws of a motion by counselors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date October 25, 2021 be approved.
All in favor? There.
And to have a motion by counselors Bruny and Shoemaker that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you, counsel.